Today on the minimum wage conversation. Now, this is how the government intends to fill the thoughts and minds of Nigerians on a possible and walkable minimum wage for Nigerians. Today we'll be speaking with Chiddu Bosa. Chiddu Bosa is the secretary campaign for democratic and workers' rights. Yes, democratic and workers' rights. He's joining us right about now on the show. Chiddu Bosa, so good to have your thoughts on the program today. Good morning.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you for having me.
All right, Chiddu.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Let's begin with what's your thought on the setting up of a public hearing first for the minimum wage conversation? Do you think it's a right move in the right direction by government?
Well, there is nothing wrong in having public hearing to arrive at the minimum wage, which for me should be a living wage. So across the country, we expect the panels to take into consideration suggestions from workers and ordinary people. I mean, so that they can use that to arrive at what should be the actual living wage for Nigerian workers. Because as we speak now, the wage cannot take any worker to the next bus stop after being paid. So we need a living wage for Nigerian workers as we speak now. Because the cost of living is a seat in the rooftop and is also going to the skies.
Now, this, to the best of my knowledge, is the very first time that a public hearing will be held on minimum wage conversation. Could this also, by indication, mean that the leadership of the Labour Congress cannot hold its own with this government?
Ah, well, you know, I mean, previously we have had negotiations. After negotiations, recommendations are submitted and it is now left for the government to arrive at what they think is best. I think that formula should know where this time around. What we need now is that they should just consider the cost of living as we speak. And cost of living, we are also talking about what should an average family, how would they arrive at distant life? And what would basically, I mean, take care of their needs? These are what we should arrive at. Don't forget, when, after all this, I mean, panel sitting at the political zones, after negotiations, I mean, the government not decides. I don't think that should be a template now. Don't also forget, out of the 37 members made panel, only about 12 are from Labour, which is just about 32, 33% of those who constitute a panel to discuss the, I mean, wage, minimum wage for Nigerian workers. I don't think that formula is correct. That formula is not correct because Labour representative, workers representative are in the minority. They are the minority. We should have at best those who suffer from this crisis in the mode being the majority, which is representative of workers in such panel. Because how do you explain Man, Manufacturing Association of Nigeria, NECA, government, federal and state? These are people who are employers of Labour, who ordinarily would not want a living wage for Nigerian workers. Because they are looking at it from a point of exploitation. So we expect a panel that ordinarily would do justice to this issue to be a panel representative of Nigerian workers in the majority. That is the first thing to start with. Because I foresee a situation whereby, after they have even resolved, they have discussed, Labour representative will be frustrated because they are in the minority, that even when they get a, what you call, an excrement, which is not going to be a living wage from the way I'm looking at it. They will not take it to federal government, not to decide. From our own experience, from the 2,000, from the 18,000 minimum wage to 30,000 minimum wage, and now, we are going to see a situation whereby many states, many states will not implement it. Don't forget, the sing song has always been that they don't have enough resources. Take off, I mean, minimum wage matter, labour matter, out of exclusive list to concurrent list. By so doing, they want a situation whereby State A, State B, Carduna, other states, I mean, different, they will have to pay something different, far lower than what the federal government will eventually pay. That for me is not going to be the template going forward. And that is why Labour must take this discussion and negotiation very serious. Serious from the point of view that if we are unable to get something reasonable, even if not a living wage, Labour should opt out from that discussion and begin to tell Nigerian workers the next step to be taken, which also includes mobilization, so that they could put pressure on the government and on employers of Labour to come out, to come out with something more reasonable or a living wage for Nigerian workers. Don't forget, if you look at the 30,000 minimum wage, section four of that minimum wage states that there are certain workers that are excluded from the minimum wage. Certain workers are excluded from the minimum wage. Part-time workers, who we all know are casuals and contract staff. And these are, these are workers in the hundreds of thousands who were excluded, who were excluded from the last minimum wage. Then you have those who employ less than 25 workers, also to be excluded. That should not be the template now. Because this kind of workers we are talking about, apart from government, the multinational companies, how many workers, how many establishments employ over 25 workers? So that you want a situation whereby, in line with the ILO Convention 131, workers, all workers should benefit from the minimum wage. And I foresee and I want, which I hope and what Nigerian workers hope, will be a living wage, so that there will be no exclusion, there will be no segregation from, I mean, from, of any kind of workers from a benefit for benefit from a minimum wage. So that's for us is the template that are going forward, I mean, arising from this discussion or negotiation.
All right, Chiddu. I would like, I would like to know your thoughts on the fact singular reports that the percentage of civil servants in the entire workforce is barely about 15%. I just want to know your thought, because you talked about the fact that Labour representative in this panel is about 30%. But do you also understand that the civil service workforce in Nigeria is not even up to 30% of the entire workforce? There are other suppliers of labour that also should have a major say in this conversation. So why would you, why should you think that Labour should have more say than the organized private sector, than the manufacturers, than the small and medium scale enterprises? Why should you think that way?
Well, I, I, I think, I think, I mean, your premise is not too correct, because even if you have the private sector, we also have unions who are representing Nigerian workers in this private sector. From one sector to another, chemical, food, you also have the unions there. Just the way you have the employers of Labour, you also have workers and their representatives who are the trade unions. So that whatever way you look at it, Nigerian workers should be adequately represented in that panel. Nigerian workers should be adequately represented in that panel. Nigerian workers are not only workers in the civil service, they are also workers in the private sector. All sectors of the economy are Greek, name it, chemical, machine, everywhere you have Nigerian workers, you also have, I mean, I mean, representative of Nigerian workers, which is the trade union, the NLC and the TUC and their affiliates.
All right, very well said. Now let's look at what, what government has said. Government says they are looking forward to ensuring a fair, sustainable national minimum wage reflective of our current economic realities and aspirations. Now, when you look at what we all understand as the current economic realities, looking at the inflation figures, looking at the purchasing power of the Nigerian man as at today, I hear Labour was asking for a million. And the papers today said that there are indications that they would drop it to 500,000 demand for minimum wage. What do you consider a fair, sustainable and in line with current economic realities, Chiddu?
Yes, I think without brandishing any figure, what I think is fair and fair to Nigerian workers should be a wage that will take care of the education of their children, the housing, costs, food, clothing, transportation and other et cetera needs of every family. So by the time they, by the time they do, if they are really serious at giving Nigerians a fair wage, which for me is a living wage, I'm sure that they will arrive at the figure. For me, I don't think that figure should be less than 200,000. I don't think, should be more than 200,000. The present reality. But for me, I think that discussion should narrow itself to all these basic index. When you have considered all these indexes, of course, the factor there, it is clear what should be a living wage that is fair to Nigerian workers. And so, so when government talks about sustainable wage, they are also trying to tell us, I mean, tell Nigerian workers that, yes, I mean, living wage is desirable, but we cannot sustain it. That is what they are trying to, they have put the, I mean, the template on the ground running, so that when it comes to paying some, I mean, something over 200,000, they will say, ah, we don't have enough funds to sustain it. That's why they put, they have put that caveat there. For us, I think Nigerians have the capacity to sustain a living wage for Nigerian workers if we prioritize productivity in this country. Because I must say it quite clearly, that those people who they prioritize are not, they are not people who should be prioritizing the first instance. The wage and salaries and allowances of political office orders are way too much for such people whose productivity is not, cannot be compared to Nigerian workers. We're talking about those who create the wealth. I mean, for instance, is it not scandalous that 161 million would be spent on one SUV for one parliamentary? That's a low, that's one SUV will keep Nigerian workers, 802 Nigerian, 805 Nigerian workers on employment. That's only one SUV. So what is the priority? If we prioritize productivity, industrialization, growth of the economy, those who create wealth should be well, I mean, paid. And what for me is well, being well paid is the living wage. So our priorities are not right. When we set the priorities right, you can be sure that sustaining a living wage for Nigerian workers is not difficult to do. I mean, when you call corruption by introducing democratic control and management by Nigerian workers and the working people, you are going to have enough resources. When you end this contract system that is so corrupt, you are going to pay, you are going to have enough funds. When you redeem the salaries of political office orders that is costing Nigeria over 1.3, 1.5 trillion, you are going to have enough resources, enough resources to pay those who are productive and those who create the wealth. That is, that is the point, that is the point we are making for the campaign for democratic and workers' rights. And I think that is what Nigerian workers want going forward in this country. So that, and a living wage has to be adjusted in line with inflationary rates, so that it can keep pace with the, I mean, rising cost of living. You cannot have a wage of, say, 30,000 like we have it, which actually don't, that was not even enough then as a living wage. Then within few months, that 30,000 had been largely eroded. And we have been on it for four years, over four years now. So a living wage is not, the president of the Nigerian Labour Congress, Komedjo Ajero, said he is pushing for a review, annual review. For me, I think annual review cannot respond to the crisis, the cost of living crisis that we have now. A review has to be done in line with inflationary rates, so that if inflation goes up, if the cost of living goes up in the next one week, the living wage earned by Nigerian workers to also go up. Then, if it goes down, then you review the wage downwards. So let us review the wage in line with the rising cost of living or the cost of living, so that we don't have to come back in the next four years and be discussing a living wage, a minimum wage that has been largely eroded by cost of living. I mean, imagine rice going for as much as 80,000, cement going as much as 11, 12, 13, 14,000. I mean, rent now for two-bedroom flat is over 800,000. And you are lucky if you have it in certain areas. You can go on and on. Food, food, people cannot feed in this country, it's unfortunate. In the 60s and 70s, we were exporting food. We have enough, we had enough. What is happening? So we need to go back to not just growing our own material base, food base, we have to also go into, I mean, having this country industrialized, so that we can compete internationally and globally. This mad rush for dollar is because Nigeria is import dependent. We are not, we are not producing anything, we are not exporting, we are all just chasing dollar. And of course, we know what they call demand and supply. When the demand is so high, I mean, the, the demand is so high, then the price goes up. And that is what is explaining, I mean, that's what explains why the dollar went to naira. Between the nine months now, has gone from about, I mean, 750 to now 1,600 plus. That is not sustainable. And to wrap it up, the government did what, I mean, what, what the government did was to now, I mean, float the naira after devaluation. So that is, it went China devalued its currency. It was with the aim, with economic aim, to make its product cheaper and more competitive, so that you will sell more. So whatever you lose by that devaluation, so that you gain by selling more in international market. But Nigeria is not exporting, we are not producing, we are not exporting. How can you now devalue naira and float it and make it disappear? What do you call the, the exchange rate of parallel is now almost the same as, as, as the official rate? These are policies that put more money in the, in the pocket and bank account of a few, while the vast majority are thrown into more poverty and misery. So I, I think, I think some of these policies have to be reversed. I mean, we, 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 we are, we are, we are a oil-producing country, one of the major ones for, for that matter. And we, we, we buy petrol for six, over 600 naira, and that is for some, some places. Then you are buying diesel, diesel for 1,004, 1,005.
Yes, all of this.
It is unacceptable.
Yes, I agree. We all agree with you on that. But we'll see what comes out of this public hearing that begins today. But I'm a little bit concerned about the methodology that will be used. The singular fact that we are having this public hearing within seven, the six geopolitical zones in Nigeria, does this suggest that we could have different minimum wage for different states or for different zones of the, of the country? Could that be what this could, what this could bring out? Because, I mean, you're talking about different states with different cost of living. Yes, different states come with different cost of living. So when you, when you demand a, 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 a single minimum wage across all the states, you begin to wonder how walkable that could be going forward, Chiddu?
Yeah, it is walkable, because when you talk about minimum wage, it's the very minimum. It's not the average wage, it's not the, it's not the wage for everybody, it's just a simple minimum wage that the lowest schedule of Nigerian workers in aim. So that, when you talk about minimum wage in that, in that context, the man in Kebbi, the minimum wage for the man in Kebbi is the same thing as minimum wage, so like that across the country. So I, I don't think that should pose any problem when you look at what you call minimum wage. That is why it is not maximum wage, it is not even average wage, it's a minimum wage upon which a worker, a worker irrespective where you are, irrespective where you live, irrespective where you reside, will earn, that will give you at least that wage with which you can survive upon. I mean, of course, I don't see anywhere in the country where rice is selling for less than 50,000 or even 60,000. So when you talk about minimum wage, we know what we are talking about. You can't, and even if you talk about even rents in different parts of the country. Don't forget, some people who have their children in some, in some campuses outside their geopolitical zone, and they pay rent. So when we talk about minimum wage, we are looking at that very minimum, that very minimum, even if your cost of living is marginally lower compared to other states, that minimum we are looking at is the minimum upon which, I mean, and a worker will survive upon for a, for a few months. I mean, so I don't think that should pose any problem. So that the states, the state government, government or the state governors should not come back and tell us that there is no money, State A does not earn as much as, I mean, as, don't forget, when they remove fresh subsidies.
Is there?
And they were earning much more, they were collecting much more from the federation account. They didn't come back and tell us that we have started collecting much more, let's increase wage for Nigerian workers. Only if the federal government did a wage review, I mean, sorry, a wage award, which was even awesomely, I mean, implemented. As we speak, this year, they have not implemented that 35,000, I mean, wage award. So the state's government have no, have no justification to come back and tell us that they are not collecting, they are not earning as much as other states. So if they set their priorities right, if they deal with corruption issues, if they prioritize Nigerian workers and as a matter of urgency, begin to look at how to grow these states, agriculture, production and the rest of them, we are going to have more money coming to state. Because these are people who don't go and collect, they are like handouts, don't go and collect money. What are these states doing with the money they have collected in the last 30 years? We should be asking those questions. They should be ready to, to grow agricultural base, to grow the productive base, to grow, to become self-sustainable. If the employment workers in a productive ventures and you are even having enough to feed your people and even export, you have more money to pay Nigerian workers. You should not be, we should not continue to harbor, I mean, very lazy elite who sit down, collect money and they just loot some of it, siphon some of it and just make a mess of the whole economy. We should insist that they are the ones who said they want the job. If a student fails in a class, they will always tell him to, they will, they will tell him to repeat. In the university, they will even tell you to withdraw if your failure is too massive. These people are failing massively and they are told, they are told to leave the place if they cannot do it. Nigerians, they, they have a permanent rate is so high in this country. And that is why you have the level of insecurity we have presently. So these people, they said they have to, they want to do the job. I mean, that's why they contested the election. So if you are there to do a job, that job is to ensure the welfare, which also means gainful employment to all Nigerian workers. And to add also, that the real estate should be also considering, deep coming out of the wage, I mean, review, is that they should pay unemployment benefits for those who are not working. That is reality on the ground. It happens in some other countries. There should be unemployment benefits to pay to them, so that if you are not working, you are not condemned to crisis and misery. That is our own take. So the minimum wage should be minimum wage for everybody, irrespective of the state you come from. Let the state governments and the state governors go and think on how to grow the economy in their different respective states is possible. I mean, create productive ventures, employ Nigerian workers, you are going to get the money. You are not there just to collect money from the federation account, then siphon the one you siphon, loot the ones you loot and you leave the whole place dry. As we speak, over 10, 12 states have not paid the last 30,000 minimum wage. And we are going to see a similarity this time around, I mean, I mean, after this wage, something has been settled, that you seem they are able to agree on something, because the cost of living is not play, is, we are not, it's not a joke, the cost of living, right cost of living. So if they do anything less than, less than 200,000, it's like a joke to Nigerian workers.
I'd like to buttress on a particular question my colleague David asked you. I'd like to rephrase it. Now, there are these particular issues with the six geopolitical zones, where the public hearing about the minimum wage is, will be held by 10 a.m. this morning. Now, definitely, there will be different variables from this different meetings or these different public hearings in the six geopolitical zones. Now, what do you think will be the parameters that will be used to harmonize this different public hearings from the six geopolitical zones in Nigeria?
Parameters is to look at the cost of living, the cost of food, cost of basic needs of Nigerian workers or Nigerians generally. And so, we are going to have maybe some states marginally lower compared to some states. And that is why we are looking at a minimum, a minimum, so that even those states where you have a marginal lower cost of living, as I say marginal, because in some respects, you could have, maybe for instance, in the predominantly agricultural state, you can have food, I mean, slightly cheaper. But when you look at other areas, you are going to be having more, more costs, higher costs in other areas. So when you draw the average, we are going to come out with a minimum wage for everybody that will cover the minimum for, for, for a state that is as marginal lower cost of living compared to other, to other states. That is not difficult, that is not a difficulty to do, in my own view, it's not difficult. So that, when, when you look at food items, don't also look at, not just food items, look at other issues, other items. I mean, I mean, that could be put into the index. So when you draw, they draw everything, a minimum is a minimum. We are not talking about even the maximum or the average, just we are looking at the minimum, the lowest schedule of Nigerian workers in aim. So I don't think that is difficult to arrive at, I mean, given the Nigerian context. And of course, I've not seen any state where they have come out to say the cost of living has gone down or the cost of living has been stable, no states, I stand to be challenged, no states. And that is why you have seen protests in Niger, you have seen protests in Kanu, you have seen protests in Lagos, you have seen protests in, I mean, different other states. So I don't think there is a major difference. As I said, I use marginal, there's no major difference in terms of cost of living, the wage rising from one state to another. That is the reality on the ground. Because Nigeria is one country. I mean, okay, cement now, for instance, where are we buying cement for 5,000, I mean, in Nigeria? Where are we buying milk, milo for less than, I mean, for instance, you won't look about, look at about 800 gram of milk, you are talking about, you are even looking at something around the six, I mean, 70, 8,000. Where is it, where is it lower? In, in the rural areas, where you think that cultural produce is even cheaper. Some of these commodities that are produced in, in city centers, where it's taken to that place, it's more expensive. Petrol is more expensive in rural areas. So I don't think there is any big difference or any major difference between, I mean, the cost of living, I mean, from one state to another. It is just almost the same. So let's have a minimum that can take care of the minimum of, I mean, the lowest standard of workers from, that covers all the, all the states of the federation. That for me is the correct thing to do. There is no difference, immediate difference between State A and State B. That is my own opinion.
All right, Chiddu, let's look at the tale of these whole issues. It will boil down to the table of the federal government to be able to pursue, to know if a statement will be made on it. And if the federal government finally makes a statement on it, it will go to the table of implementation by the state's government. Remember the 30,000 minimum wage some states have not been able to implement it as a claim that they do not have enough money at all, they can't pay salaries. that they do not have enough money at all, they can't pay salaries, except the fact comes to their table because the I G R Os are low right now. Do you think the state governments will have the political will to be able to implement this new minimum wage if finally it sees the light of the day? And if that is to the, if, if that is to the negative, what do you think should be done? Or what other process do you think the federal government should employ in order to make sure that as soon as the pronouncement is made, it goes straight to the table of implementation?
Well, uh, the state governments, even in the, even the federal governments, even the private sector employers, no average capitalists will want to pay a, a, a wage to a higher wage. It is always, it always comes through struggle. None of them will want to pay higher wage, even if they want to pay higher wage due to pressure or protest. It is not going to be a wage that would fundamentally, I mean, reduce their profit. None of them, so that, so I don't think they are going to come back, just smack me, I just smack my words. They are going to come back to say, we don't have money. Even if you say you want to pay thirty thousand, thirty five thousand naira minimum wage now. For instance, these same state governors will come and tell you that they don't have money to pay. I told you just a few minutes ago that o- over twelve states, I think around fifteen states of, of, of the Federation did not implement the thirty thousand minimum wage up to now. So you can be sure that they will come back and tell us that they don't have enough money and, and all those kind of story. Let them open the books, let's see the books, the last, let them open the books, let's see what has happened with those resources. Because Nigeria has, we have the money, we have the resources, we have man, human and natural resources. So let them, let us explore those resources. I don't think the Nigerian problem is so bad to the extent that you tell us that you don't have money to implement. But you have money to pay jumbo salaries for political officials. You have money to pay, buy S U Bs costing fifty, sixty, up to one sixty something million per one political office holder. Because as they are doing at the senate and the House of Representatives, they are doing the same thing, and the local government doing the same at the state level. The executive at the federal level are doing the same thing. So we have enough resources. The priorities have to be set right. Let's set priorities right, where there will be enough money to pay living wage for Nigerian workers.
Tenu, thank you. Thank you so very much for your thoughts. I, I can imagine, uh, the heated arguments, uh, that would ensue at the hearing across the, uh, the, the zones today. I can imagine how much argument, uh, it will, it will come about. But then, we, we are waiting, we're looking forward to having, uh, what is regarded as a fair, uh, fair, a fair minimum wage agreed upon, uh, across all the, the, the public hearing. Tenu, both our secretary campaigns for democratic and, and workers' rights. Uh, thank you for your time with us on News Up today.